Recording in progress.
There we go. I call this Planning Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 5495-3, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency relative to COVID-19 on March 4th, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the town can conduct essential business as permitted under Government Code 5495-3 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. I'll now take the roll call. Vice Chair Luster?
Here.
Commissioner Bodie?
Here.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Helber?
Here.
Commissioner Polsky?
Present.
Commissioner Teal?
Here.
And I chair Hylissim here. We are also joined by Town of Moraga staff, including Planning Director Hamid, and I believe I heard Planner Mendez on the recording. And we have Planner Horn, as well as Consultants Barry Miller, Stephanie Hager, and I believe Ian Lilly is also likely one of our consultants. Moving to conflict of interest, do any commissioners have a conflict of interest to report?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Contact with applicants, we do have one application on consent. Have any of the commissioners had contact with the applicant? Seeing none, we can move on. To the pledge of allegiance, which if you don't have a flag, I have one left over for my festivities yesterday. And Vice Chair Luster, would you mind doing the honors?
Not at all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And now to public comments. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the Planning Commission. The audience should be aware that the Commission may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Note, public input will also be taken during each item on the agenda. If there are any public comments at this time, please utilize the raise hand feature of the webinar and we will call on you. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. And let me see if we have, we do have two attendees, but I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I think we can close public comment section and move on to adoption of the consent agenda. We do have one item on tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice Chair Luster, seconded by Commissioner Bodie. Take the roll call, Vice Chair Luster.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodie?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I abstain.
Commissioner Helber?
Aye.
Commissioner Polsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Teal?
Aye.
And I chair Hylissim also an aye. Motion passes. Now we move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Bodie, seconded by Vice Chair. Vice Chair Luster? Vice Chair Luster, I assume you're an aye?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we're going into the role. Sorry, sorry.
Commissioner Bodie?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Chair, I have to ask a point of order.
Sure.
Do we have a new agenda for this meeting, or are we using the agenda from the previous meeting?
We're using the agenda from this meeting, which we should have received in our packets. At least I got one when my printout was delivered for the July 5th meeting.
Okay. I have to abstain, I do not find that I have an agenda, and that's not because I don't have one, so I can't find it. So I will abstain again.
Mine are attached to the outside of a holder. I don't know if yours was the same.
I don't think all of us received a hard copy because it was so, it was such a dense.
You guys listen to chat, Commissioner Davis, if you'd like to review it quickly.
I have.
Alisa?
We're still looking at the wireless, aren't we?
That was on consent, and we just passed the consent agenda.
Correct, okay. I can, that's great, and that is what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you. I was looking for it in the book, it was wide open.
Okay. Is that an aye, or are you?
It's an aye, aye, it's a lovely agenda.
Thank you. Aye, Commissioner Helber?
Aye.
Commissioner Polsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Teal?
Aye.
And I chair Hylissim, also an aye. That passes. So now moving on to the public hearing, study session on draft 2023, 2031 Housing Element Programs. We discussed the general framework of what we are reviewing this evening, last week. Staff, I believe you have a presentation for us, at least I hope you do. And Director Hamid, wanted to check to see if you had anything to say prior to the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hylissim and Planning Commission. So first, I'm going to do introductions of the team. So this has been a long process, and there've been a lot of people working on this. So beginning with our consultant, Barry Miller Consultants, I'm so grateful to have him. Stephanie Hagar is also with BAE, and she's also been spearheading major portions of this. And then Karen Murphy with BWS is here. As you know, there are a lot of new state laws, so Karen is definitely helping to steer us and provide a lot of guidance. So myself, I am working on behalf of the town on this. And so that's where we are, and we're going to start the PowerPoint. And what I do want to say is that tonight is a major milestone. But it is not the final milestone. Tonight is one of the milestones, and this is really an iterative process. And tonight is really more a discussion of the overall frame. And I know that 250 pages is a lot of the frame, but it is, a lot of this is coming because of the state laws that are requiring us. And this is very different from the fifth cycle housing element. So there is a lot on us, the town as a whole. But this is not the implementation. This is more a discussion of what direction do we want to go? What do we want to bring back for future discussions? And how do we want to handle them? So that is really how we're approaching this. Once you provide your recommendations tonight, we will take it to the Town Council over two meetings next week. The 11th and the 13th. And the Town Council will then have two meetings to really just review this. And they will be, they will have the final say on taking this working draft and submitting it to HCD. So let's get started with the PowerPoint for tonight. Barry, can you please put that up?
Okay, we should be good to go. Let's just make this full screen. Okay, and can everyone see this? Hopefully. Wonderful. Great, so I'll get started, and thank you, good evening commissioners. And Stephanie and I are going to do a little bit of tag teaming on this presentation. In a way, we're going to be going up to a higher level than where we were presenting last week. Last week, we were kind of, you know, in the nitty gritty on the programs, and we're going to provide a little bit more context for the overall project here. This slide you've seen before, this is just to, as a refresher, that we're working on the Housing Element Update, which is the only part of the general plan that is subject to certification by the state. In this case, it's the Housing and Community Development Department, HCD. And it's the most prescriptive part of our general plan. The contents of this document are pretty much prescribed in detail by state law, and that detail has gotten a lot bigger in the last couple of years. So the task before us is to demonstrate that we can accommodate what's called our fair share of the region's housing needs. And we've got a slide a little further down explaining what our fair share is and how that plays into this whole process. So Asha was giving you a bit of an overview of the Housing Element Update process. This is, we are now over here in the Assemble HCD Draft Housing Element, we've actually completed that. But where we've come from is really kind of a lot of work in the last 10 months, beginning with our team being brought on, doing a lot of data collection and analysis in the fall, identifying some strategies to rezone and implement some new housing programs in really February, March, April, May, developing some goals, policies, and programs, and then putting it all together in the span of about nine months. And here's where we still have to go. So it's a long process, and it's, as Asha said, it's an iterative process. So we're here now, and this document, that's a working draft, is going to be circulating for 30 days, and then we allow for additional time if we need to make any edits or changes to the document. We then will submit it to the state, and they have 90 days to review the document. And at the end of that 90 days, they will issue a letter to us, a letter of findings, saying, here are all the areas where we feel that you need to do additional work on your document before you've complied with all of the Government Code requirements, and they'll tell us what else we need to do. Just prior to us getting our comments back, we'll be releasing a draft environmental impact report, primarily focused on the rezoning that's going on as part of the Comprehensive Planning Initiative. So that's the rezoning of the housing opportunity sites, but also the Bolinger Canyon Study Area and the adoption of the new policies that are in the housing element. So then we'll make the edits in response to HCD's comments and release a public review draft, which will come back to the Planning Commission along with the EIR, the responses to comments on the EIR. And the idea is that all of this gets wrapped up by January 31st, 2023, which is a statutory deadline that's been given to all cities and counties in the Bay Area. We submit the adopted document to the state, and then they have 60 days to tell us if it's in compliance. If it's not in compliance, we again go through this iterative process of making revisions and adopting it again with whatever amendments are necessary. It's just a word of warning that in Southern California, which is a year ahead of us, at this point, only 18 of the 193 jurisdictions have been found in compliance. So the state is being really tough on local governments, and we expect that they'll be tough on local governments in the Bay Area as well. So we're doing our best to get it right the first time so that we can minimize the, any additional revisions we need to make. So more than any other housing element that the town has done, this has been a community-driven process. We've done everything we can to reach out to the public, both through the Commission and Council Study Sessions, through six community workshops, including a walking tour of our housing sites, reaching out to about a dozen civic organizations and making presentations to Rotary and Kiwanis and Lions and other clubs and organizations in the city, doing two large community surveys, plus the Balancing Act app, which we'll talk about in a moment, creating a website, having a Facebook presence and other social media, various events at the farmer's market, the Perrin Wine Festival, interviewing developers and doing outreach to property owners. Some of you may have seen the electronic message board light up with things about the housing element, as you can see in this picture here. Just a lot of outreach, and I want to contrast this, when the 2015 Housing Element was done, there was one community workshop, there were six attendees at that workshop. And so we tried to raise the bar on community engagement through this process. So some of what we've heard from the community, several resounding messages that we've heard over and over, preserve the small-town character of Moraga. So a lot of the imperative in this is how can we accommodate our fair share of the region's housing needs while still preserving the character of the town and keeping the great qualities that Moraga has now? And some of that really comes with some of the next bullets, which is preserving our open space and hillsides, really taking a hard look at wildfire hazards and public safety through this process, looking at traffic and evacuation. A pretty strong consensus that if we have to grow, and I'll say that the town was pretty split on whether it would even accept growth, but if we have to grow, to focus that growth on the existing commercial areas rather than on our open spaces, to really look at ways to improve our commercial districts and shopping centers, and to look at the needs of our local workforce. And some of the populations in the community that have limited housing choices, such as St. Mary's students, our older adult population, young adults, and so on. I think the key message from the developers is that they find Moraga challenging, and that's, you know, a relative term, I think compared to maybe to Walnut Creek or another community that has seen a lot more development. Moraga is challenging. And, you know, we, Asha and I, I think in our interviews, really, we're trying to probe why? Why is it challenging? What are the things that the town can do to make it more conducive to building housing? So I'm going to shift gears for a moment and turn it over to Stephanie. She's going to walk you through what's in the housing element, and we'll be taking turns on some of these slides. Stephanie?
Yeah, thanks Barry. So yeah, I'm just going to walk through what is in the housing element that we're discussing tonight. I think you can go to the next slide. So the first chapter is your introduction. This is where we go over what a housing element is. We provide some context on Moraga and also the region and the state, some historical context, and also some context about where Moraga fits into the wider region now. An overview of the regional housing needs allocation, which is the fair share housing allocation that Barry was referencing, both the concept behind it and also Moraga's number for the upcoming eight years. We provide a little bit of background on how the document is organized. There is a section on consistency with the general plan. Because the housing element is a component of your general plan, it needs to be consistent with the other elements. So there is a section of this that looks at the extent to which the housing element is currently consistent, and it talks about how consistency will be achieved and maintained throughout the rest of the planning period. And then there's a summary of the community engagement process, the events that occurred, the feedback that we heard, which Barry just provided a summary of, and how that was connected to the programs and the actions that are taken in the Housing Element document. Chapter two is the Housing Element Evaluation. This looks at the last housing element for the Town of Moraga, so the housing element that covered the 2015 to 2023 Housing Element planning period, and looks at how well the town did at achieving its objectives from that last housing element, where there might be room for improvement, and what did work. So a portion of this looks at each of the programs from your last housing element and determines whether or not there are components of those that should be carried forward, either programs in their entirety or components of those that worked well, what should be deleted. And that helps to inform the programs that we included in the housing element for the upcoming cycle. Chapter three is your needs assessment. This looks at a variety of data sources to assess housing needs in Moraga now and in the near future. So this includes looking at demographic data, at the age of the population in Moraga, the size of households, whether households are renters or owners, the race and ethnicity breakdown of the population. We also look at income and employment characteristics, what kinds of industries Moraga residents work in, what income levels are like among Moraga households. One big component of this is looking at housing cost burden. This is a measure of the proportion of household income that's spent on housing costs. In general, when we see households that are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, this is a metric that is commonly used to determine that there are households, particularly if these are lower-income households, that may be struggling to afford housing along with meeting other basic needs. So this is an important metric that housing elements look at in order to determine where there may be needs for more affordable housing. We also look at special housing needs. So there are specific groups that are identified by the state that the housing element needs to look at. These are groups that tend to have sort of unique housing challenges. Often, these are groups that also tend to have lower incomes than the population at large. So this includes seniors, people with disabilities, unhoused populations, female-headed households, large households. And then finally, we look at housing conditions. So this includes both the physical condition of housing stock. It also looks at the housing typology that you have in town, so multifamily or single-family, do you have townhomes? And it looks at housing cost. So, you know, in particular, in Moraga, it's highlighting the high cost of, for sale housing in particular, but rental housing as well.
Great, so I think I have the next two slides, and Housing Sites is the fourth chapter, and this is where we show the town's ability to meet the regional housing needs allocation, which is the number of units that we've been assigned to plan for for the next eight years. That includes projects that have already been approved, and there are a number of those totaling about 225 units in Moraga. Sites that could be, where low and medium-density housing could be built. These are primarily sites that are zoned for single-family or R6-density housing, high-density housing sites. And again, these are mostly vacant sites. And then the mixed-use sites, and these are sites that are zoned either for commercial uses where housing is allowed or explicitly for districts where we're proposing changing the zoning to allow mixed use in the future. And those sites include some that are vacant and some that are non-vacant, where through our communication with property owners or research on data about the value of what's on the property or the structure coverage, or other attributes, closed businesses and so forth, believe that those sites are good candidates for housing. And finally, accessory dwelling units. And I think we made this point at a number of meetings in the past. The appearance of a site on the list of housing opportunity sites is only an acknowledgement that housing is possible on these sites. It doesn't mean the sites are going to be developed, or that the owner has to develop them, or that they have to be developed with affordable housing. It is simply an inventory of sites in the town where housing is permitted and likely could be built in the next eight years. These are those numbers we were talking about. The assignment for the next eight years is 1,118 units. That includes 501 units that would be potentially affordable to low and very low-income households. When we're talking about low and very low, that's an income of less than $109,600 a year for a family of four. So that's the threshold in Contra Costa County for low income at this point in time. So that's primarily, the low and very low share would primarily be rental apartments, in some cases, affordable ownership opportunities, but it's mostly rental housing developed at multifamily densities. So there are a number of changes that are proposed in Chapter Four to meet the assignment. Right now, at this particular point in time, we don't have enough capacity to provide 1,118 units, particularly at those higher densities. So there are proposals to rezone some of the mixed-use areas to allow 24 housing units per acre, instead of 20 housing units per acre, so a small increase, to permit housing in the REEM Commercial District. Those zones that have the REEM Shopping Center and some of the office buildings and other commercial uses currently do not allow housing, so that would be changing with adoption of the housing element. There are a couple of small zoning map changes where individual properties would be moved into zoning designations where housing is allowed. They're currently in zones where housing is not allowed, and these are all in the REEM and Moraga Center Commercial Districts. And then several measures to address zoning constraints. The combination of all those things will help us or will allow us to achieve our arena. The last bullet on this slide I want to emphasize, because we can't simply just show that we're providing 1,118 units. The state is requiring that we affirmatively further fair housing. The acronym for that is AFFH. This is a new requirement that went into effect just a couple of years ago. And what it says is we can't accommodate all of our lower-income need in one area. We have to spread it out across the town, particularly in what they call high-resource areas. The whole Town of Moraga is a high-resource area in this case, but we're still obligated to demonstrate that we're creating opportunities across the town. Stephanie, I think you were going to do the last couple?
Yeah, thanks Barry. So Chapter Five looks at constraints. So the constraints from the Housing Element perspective sort of fall into two different buckets. One is government constraints, and the other is non-government constraints. The government constraints looks at town policies and ordinances that could potentially constrain the development of housing. So this includes policies in your general plan that could potentially make it difficult to build residential units in town. It also includes zoning standards that could serve as an impediment to building residential units, other ordinances that impact development that could keep you from being able to meet your fixture housing needs, permitting processes and requirements, so how long does it take to go through the entitlement process? How many areas of uncertainty are there in that process? And then local fees on new development that could make it prohibitively expensive to build new housing. Then the non-governmental constraints is looking at items that are not directly under the town's control, like land and construction costs, the availability of financing, but that could still get in the way of somebody being able to conduct residential development. So. And then Chapter Six of the Housing Element is your housing plan. This is where we take the information that we've compiled in all of the other sections of the Housing Element, the information that we heard through the public engagement process, what we have heard from you during the process, and also from the Town Council. And we come up with a roadmap for how the town will meet its housing needs over the next eight years. So the housing plan includes a variety of actions for the town to take. It's a commitment that the town is making to undertake a series of actions to address housing needs. It by itself does not enact any new ordinances or make any zoning changes. It's laying out a course of action for the town to take in order to potentially adopt new ordinances or make zoning changes, but it doesn't, by you adopting the housing element, it does not automatically make any of those ordinances happen on their own. There needs to be other actions that the town will take. So it's laying out a roadmap for you to follow to address housing needs over the next eight years. And then we have.
Do you want to go back?
Well, I was going to just go over the goals real quick.
Oh, please.
So the actions in the housing element are organized under seven different goals in order to meet different areas of the town's housing need. So the first goal relates to production of new housing to meet housing needs. This is really focused on getting to that fair housing, fair share housing, regional housing needs allocation number. Goal two relates to housing mix and affordability. This is about improving the mix of types of housing in Moraga in order to make more housing available to wider segments of the community. The third goal relates to housing conservation and safety. This is where we think about wildfire risk and evacuation. It's also where we look at need for rehabilitation and also citing particularly affordable units in areas where they have access to services. Then the fourth goal is reducing constraints, particularly government constraints, thinking about actions that the town can take to reduce undue constraints to residential development by changing city policies or standards. The fifth goal relates to special housing needs. This is meeting needs among some of those special needs groups that I mentioned a couple of slides ago, so seniors, people with disabilities, unhoused populations. Goal six relates to fair housing. So this one sort of ties into a lot of the actions that you're taking under some of these other goals that are meant to increase the inclusivity of housing in Moraga. But it also relates more directly to addressing discrimination in the housing market and other fair housing issues. And then Goal Seven really is to address energy efficiency and conservation. So then we move on to Appendix A, which is your affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. So Barry mentioned that this is a strengthened requirement in this. housing element cycle, new, with, sort of new laws that were passed statewide a couple of years ago. So all public agencies have an obligation to administer their housing and community development policies in a way that affirmatively furthers fair housing. So that means in part what might come to mind initially, which is things like addressing discrimination in the housing market. But it's also much more broadly defined to mean overcoming existing patterns of segregation, ensuring access to opportunity, addressing risk for displacement among potentially vulnerable populations. And so it's looking at a variety of factors that could affect fair housing that go beyond just discrimination in the housing market and really think about living patterns and how local agencies can structure their policies and their ordinances in a way to help overcome some of the historic patterns in our, that we see in some of these, in our data analysis. So for the housing element, that really comes, comes out in four different components of the process. The first is outreach and ensuring that the outreach meets underserved, reaches out to underserved populations. The second component of that is the assessment of fair housing, which is the component that's really captured in your, in the, in Appendix A of the Housing Element update. So this is where we look at trends related to segregation, displacement risk. We also look at fair housing outreach and enforcement capacity and assess where there may be issues related to fair housing, both regionally and locally. The third component where affirmatively furthering for housing interacts with the housing element is in the sites analysis. Barry talked about that when he was going over those slides. And so this is really ensuring that there is, there are opportunities for affordable housing located throughout town. And then the fourth component is in the priorities, goals, and actions. So this is your housing plan, ensuring that there are actions that help to affirmatively further fair housing. For Maraga, one of the key components to remember related to affirmatively furthering for housing is that you are a high-resource community. And so what that means is that there are characteristics in Maraga that have been found to help to improve educational, economic, and health outcomes, particularly for lower-income populations. And so that what the state is looking for as a part of this process is to ensure that high-resource communities like Maraga are enacting housing policies, enacting ordinances that help to make housing more inclusive, to allow access to that opportunity for a wider segment of the population than can currently afford to live in Maraga. So it's about, you know, not just, you know, is there discrimination in the housing market? It's about thinking about, we have, what, your current housing cost, the current makeup of your housing stock and the income required to afford to live in Maraga and trying to expand that so that households at a range of income levels can have access to the opportunities that are available in Maraga.
Great, just a couple more slides here. We've got a quick recap of the other appendices. Appendix B is a detailed matrix that includes data on all of the housing opportunity sites. You can see, you know, it includes information like the environmental constraints, infrastructure, whether it's encountered before, what the acreage is and so forth. Appendix C is the resident survey. So I think the commission is aware that there was a resident survey done for roughly a three-month period earlier this year. We received 1,008 responses, mostly from Maraga residents that included 96 renters, which was really helpful because we were able to break down the responses by owner versus renter to see what our renters were telling us versus what our owners were telling us, what folks who live here but don't, sorry, what folks who work here but don't live here thought about housing. In general, we found through the survey that residents are mostly satisfied with their housing conditions. Renters were less satisfied and the key concerns I highlighted on that slide earlier, fire, traffic, evacuation, and community character. We also found the highest levels of support for townhomes and senior housing. We also did a student survey. Part of the genesis for this was that we were getting kind of a low response rate from the 20 to 34 age cohort to our major survey, but also students are a significant special needs group in Maraga. There are a lot of students that go to school at St. Mary's who live elsewhere, some who live in the town. We wanted to hear from both of those groups. We received about 140 responses and some really interesting, both anecdotal information and numeric information, just in terms of the way people ranked their priorities and their housing situations. That was also helpful in helping shape the policies. Appendix C is the Balancing Act survey. I think commission, the commission is aware that we were able to use this gaming app through, through ABAG, through a grant from ABAG. This is a simulator that allows the public to tell us where they think housing should be located within the town. We narrowed the range of choices to identify these 11 sub-areas in the Reem Center and in Maraga Center and received some, about 108 responses from the public and a number of, had a number of community meetings where folks participated in group exercises. And we did make some changes to the allocation based on the feedback that we got from the public. So this was more than just exercise, it was something where we actually used the input to inform some of our decisions about where housing would go. There were two issues that I wanted to highlight before we wrap up. One, it relates to inclusionary zoning and the second relates to the scenic corridor setback. These, we talked a little bit about inclusionary zoning in the last meeting. We have a slide after this one on the scenic corridor setback. I think the point here is that we've, we've modified the language in the draft element essentially to say that this is something the town will do in the future, but the details of an inclusionary zoning ordinance will be sorted out at a later date. The housing element, as, as was said earlier, is a work plan and we're, we don't have to work out every detail of the inclusionary zoning or the changes we're making to our ordinances at this point in time. So we made that language a little more general in response to the, the feedback that we received. The scenic corridor setback, I think the point here is, you know, we identified a constraint in the MCSP area. When the zoning was adopted for that area a few years ago, it established a 40-foot setback from the right-of-way along all scenic corridors, and that's Maraga Way and Maraga Road within the MCSP area. What that does on some of the housing opportunity sites, like the one you see here outlined in red, this is a vacant lot at the corner of Viator Road and Maraga Way, just for orientation. This is the Outdoor Supply Hardware Store, the Chase Bank, school streets over here, so this is a vacant lot. Roughly a quarter of that lot becomes undevelopable if you take a 40-foot setback away from its development, potential developable area. We haven't come up with any specific recommendation. All that's being said here is that, you know, this is a potential constraint. We look around and see that the adjacent properties all have structures that extend into that 40-foot setback area. So potentially, in the future, there'd be an amendment to the MCSP regulations to come up with some modified setback standards in cases like this where we may not be able to achieve the number of units that we said we could in our housing element because a portion of the site can't be developed. So the way it's worded is to allow modified setbacks where certain conditions apply. That's a future amendment that would be, that would happen at some point during the housing element implementation period. So just to wrap up, the next steps, as was mentioned earlier, we have study sessions with the town council next week on Monday and Wednesday, July 11th and 13th. The public has 30 days now to review the working draft and submit comments. We have then 10 days to make edits to the document and then submit it to the state. And in the interim period, while the state's reviewing the document, we'll be releasing the draft EIR, receiving our comments in the fall and making revisions so that this can be adopted along with the EIR and general plan amendments by the end of January 2023. So the staff recommendation for this evening is to consider public comment, to provide comment and feedback on the draft for consideration by the town council. We are asking that the commission recommend that the council authorize the middle of the draft to HCD for their review, inclusive of any edits that may be made during the 30 days at the end of this period. And finally, for those of members of the public who may be watching this, we have Afshah's email and phone here for reference, and that is the recipient of any comments on the draft. Also want to point out that because we, this is still a working draft, we're still about seven months away from adoption. There'll be another public comment period that will be provided late in 2022 when we have the public review draft, which is, we hope not that different from the draft that we have circulating now. But we won't know until we get HCD's comments on the current draft. And that concludes the presentation. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller, and thank you staff for your presentation. At this time, we're going to be opening this up to, to Commissioner questions. And as always, I ask that you save any comments to the comment section of this meeting. Please save this just for, for questions. I'm sure that we're all or many of us will have comments and potential requests for changes to the document. I'm going to ask Director Hamid, when we do get to the comment section, if she can help us to consolidate any that, any suggestions that we might have. But at this point, I ask that you just keep your, your, to, to questions of staff. With that, do we have any questions for staff? I see Vice Chair Lester.
Thank you. I, sorry, I've missed a couple of meetings regarding this, but I wanted to say that the consultants, the staff did a really, really good job of just laying this out so clearly in terms of what we're looking at, what we're analyzing, where we're trying to go. You did a really, really good job. Not that I agree with every goal we have, but still you did a fabulous job. So thank you for all your hard work on that. There are so many little nuances and factors in all of this. So I just wanted to go over a couple of things. With regard to our initial, I think it's Chapter Two. I spoke with Planning Director Hamid earlier today, and she answered a lot of my questions. So luckily, you're about down to half of my questions. But I still want to address a couple of things. Chapter Two, this is regarding the effectiveness of our fifth cycle housing element. And on that first page, I know this is already an approved, pushed-through, you know, set of words on this page that we cannot change. However, with regard to the language here, is there anything that is equivalent moving forward onto our sixth cycle with regard to how they describe some of these goals? This particular goal says that we are looking for greater cultural diversity. This is H6, and the prevention of discrimination, which I'm all for. I am concerned about some of the language in terms of defining the diversity. And I'm wondering what language specifically goes through into Cycle Six that I can make sure is as succinct and clear and nonspecific as possible.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
So the goals from your last housing element are fairly similar to what was carried forward into this Housing Element update. If you'll give me just a moment to pull up both versions.
And I didn't see the specific language in the goals for Cycle Six.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I'm wondering, and it might not be an issue. But I couldn't find the sort of same language as well as sort of the analysis of whether or not those goals were met.
Yeah, so while I, let's see, let's start with the Goal Six that we have this time. Give me just a moment to get to the exact language. So Goal Six now, wait. Yeah, so Goal Six did change somewhat. So this is fair housing. It says equal, promote equal housing opportunity for all residents regardless of age, race, ethnicity, religion, sex, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, marital or family status, disability, ancestry, national origin or color. So this is meant to address the various components that are looked at under the state for groups, you know, to ensure that all groups have equal access to housing and are subject to fair housing.
And that sounds all-inclusive to me, so that's an okay thing, I think. Yeah, that's very inclusive. I just want to make sure we weren't too specific on our language of which, which diversity, but that is all-inclusive of diversity, so I'm okay with that.
But Chair, I think what we have done here is we've modified the goal to state promote equal housing opportunities instead of greater cultural diversity. That way, when we are addressing through the policies, we have specific policies that are attainable that we can come back to.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then also with regard to moving forward in the language that is in Cycle Six, on page two of the staff report, there is a listing, lines 29 through 37, of the overarching goals. And specifically, one says, "Improving the livability and economic prosperity of all Maraga citizens and promoting fair housing choice for all." If this is just language that we are using just for fun, that's fine. I think, I just wanted to clarify that the words "economic prosperity" are not our goal anywhere in Cycle Six, as economic prosperity is not something that we can provide to Maragans. But we can provide, improve our livability, and we can provide promoting of fair housing. So I just, Afshah and I talked and we decided that economic diversity is a better term and possible to provide. I just want to make sure that that economic prosperity is not mentioned as a goal anywhere moving forward in the language, it's just not attainable from, from what we can do.
Does that address, though, the concept of not paying more than 30% of your income towards housing? Is that the purpose of that language? Sorry, through the chair.
I don't think so, only because this is saying improving people's economic prosperity means sort of like allowing people to make more money, earn more money, get more money? Is that, are you saying by lessening what they're paying to housing, they would by then somehow have more?
If I may, and I do see Commissioner Polsky's point, but I do, I do believe that the economic diversity description that's talking about, you know, mix, mixing income residential, which is one of the, the goals, so I think that better captures. So, and we can talk more about suggestions later, but I, I do see your point.
Yes. And again, I'm not sure if that language, I couldn't find the specific language in our Cycle Six draft. But I want to make sure that since these are listed as our goals, that somehow that economic prosperity didn't sneak in there. Because I don't think it's the proper use of, of, you know, the language based on what our goals are. Economic diversity is. And then in Chapter Five, you know what, this might be something that we can address later. You mentioned steep slopes as part of the general plan implementation and how to sort of alter some of the constraints. I just want to make sure we can address steep slopes specifically later. That is correct, right?
It's not something we just invented. It's not a, an arbitrary restraint on construction.
Right.
Those slope mitigations are part of our, our town code for a reason.
Right, and if there's something we want to address, the specifics later at some point, will that be part of our next phase? In terms of implementation, not in terms of getting the draft out to
Right.
the housing, but in terms of actually creating the language and solidifying that in our code, we will have time to.
Yeah, through the chair. Again, Chair Lester and I did discuss this earlier. And the, the slopes are specifically discussed in the general plan. So we are not working on the general plan right now. That is not what we are discussing. But I do understand Vice Chair Lester's concerns. And when we do get to a point where we start working on the general plan and addressing some of these, we can look at that at that time.
Okay.
If I can add to, there, there is, there are no programs in the general, in the housing element that specifically deal with changing any regulations. that specifically deal with changing any regulations pertaining to slopes or hillsides.
Okay. And then with regard to the scenic corridors, can you just remind me once again what the current planning process is? If it's different between a residential development versus a commercial development with regard to the scenic corridor? For instance, you know, if, if someone proposes something in the MCSP specifically, since you brought it up, that it's a forty-foot setback. Is that something that is going to be approved through the planning department? Or does the planning commission and town council have a chance to look at something in the MCSP? Because I know we set very specific guidelines on development.
So, yes, again, through the chair. With scenic corridors, they are throughout the town. And the scenic corridors also, it's on Ring Boulevard, Camino Pablo, Bolinger Canyon Road, Upper Donald Drive. And these are scenic corridors. They are actually, you know, very specific in our current ordinance. And each corridor extends five hundred feet on either side of the roadway center line, so a thousand feet total. So buildings that are visible from the scenic roadways in each corridor are subject to special standards above and beyond those in the base zoning districts. And the corridors bisect both of the town's major commercial district and also will apply to a number of the housing opportunity sites. So in particular to MCSP, the scenic corridor is forty feet. And that came up through the CAC, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee. And that is one of the ones that came up through, up through, up through that committee, along with some other programs that they wanted for the MCSP. And so that's why we're addressing it tonight because specifically in the MC, MCSP, it's forty feet. Whereas in other areas of town, it is not defined as, as much. And when there is a proposal for a scenic corridor for development, it usually comes to the planning commission for review. So if you remember, if you will recall, Canyon Club Brewery had a pergola. The reason that pergola came to the planning commission was because it was in the scenic corridor. The town also proposed a pergola in front of the, the, the the town council meeting hall. So because that also came before you because it was on the scenic corridor, and I believe so did the skate park. So the question really here is what the, what we are bringing up is what we've identified is now that we are looking at development in a more detailed manner. And we're looking at sites, particularly housing opportunity sites. That is a potential constraint that we have identified, especially in the MCSP area. And so that is something that we are identifying and bringing this up to the commission.
Okay, thank you. And so the draft that we will submit here is purely noting this might be one of the topics we need to address, right?
Correct. We have not come up with a proposal yet on what that should be. But we are just identifying it as a potential constraint that we should look at.
Okay. Okay. I think, I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Other questions? Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair Ellis. I think this would be a great time to segue into a question of staff. My understanding last year when we had the new regulation put on us that we couldn't pass any new constraints on development was that existing constraints on development were in fact not part of the law. That existing ordinances in communities were still relevant. Am I correct in that understanding?
That is correct. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm, I'm going to mention that this town in its history had three different ballot measures that I'm aware of that were passed by the electorate of this town that did things like create our ridgeline protections and our open space protections and our scenic corridors. The other thing I would note, I believe, I'm going to ask each commissioner, just to kind of give me a nod. Every one of us was interviewed by council and selected for commission on the basis of our understanding that one of our jobs was to protect those ordinances that created things like Mosso and Ridgelines and scenic corridors and the MSP, which means Maraga Center Specific Plan. We were each of us asked whether we stood for that. Is that accurate? Or am I the only one that got that grilling? All three times? Okay, I thought so. I'm pretty sure that each of our council members ran on the same platform. Every one of them. I would assume there's a question coming. There is. I would assume our staff was also hired with an understanding that they would protect Maraga's semi-rural nature and character and that they understood what this town values and represents. Am I incorrect on that, Director Hamid?
I didn't have a specific interview question about that.
I didn't, okay, well.
And I wasn't interviewed by the town council. So I, I am, you know, I report to the town manager. I, you know, I, I bring in experience and I adapt to the town and to the town's goals that are before me.
Fair enough. I, I would not even attempt to define on what questions the town manager was grilled with. The reason I ask this is that, is that some things in this town's history have been pretty clear. And the state was pretty clear last year when they said, don't dare, don't anybody dare pass new rules to make this impossible. But why are we even talking about, here's my question then, Mr. Miller. Why are we even talking about getting rid of things that we already know are sacred cows? That the residents of this town have voted for on repeated occasions? That every one of us in this body have been asked to support? And every council member you're going to talk to on the eleventh has been elected on the basis of saying he or she would support. Why is this here? Specific to our scenic corridors.
Yeah, through the chair, I would like to, we know that this is an issue that is a hot button item. And that it's going to be discussed next week as well. And I would like to have our town attorney discuss this and provide a little bit more of the framework.
Yes, thank you, Director Hamid. I, with respect to the scenic corridor discussion, as well as, you know, the proposed, you know, goals and programs. Again, the housing element is not including specific language about the scenic corridors, but just indicating that in order to ensure that development can proceed at the densities that we're allowing it, that, that we may need to look at additional objective standards that still protect the scenic corridors, but, but provide more flexibility. So, and again, at this point, we don't know what that might be or what it may look like. But we are, you know, noting that that is something, especially with the increased densities, that that is something that the town desires to look at through the next housing element cycle. Again, this isn't, at, at this point, we're not proposing, and the town's not proposing anything specific, but including that as a program and something to, to look at as we move forward to ensure consistency throughout the town and, and development at the densities that are proposed.
I'm going to have to say by that argument, we should be looking at building on our ridgelines too. I mean, I don't see the difference. I'm happy that we're not looking at that, by the way. Please don't take that as a suggestion. But I don't see why they're different. Both are codified in ordinance. Both are clear standards in this community.
Commissioner Davis, if I may also respond, thank you. Thanks for your comment. So we're not proposing any changes to the Mosso Open Space or the Hillside or Ridgeline Ordinance or many of the ordinances that you cited. I think we recognize those are really critical and crucial to the town's character. We've been given an assignment by the state to show how we can accommodate five hundred multifamily units somewhere in the town. And we've, we've identified the two commercial districts as the least damaging place to put those units or the place that would be the most acceptable, given the values and the importance, and possibly even looking for the upside or the silver lining in creating some more vitality and life in those commercial districts. All we are saying in this finding is that there's a forty-foot setback for some of the sites that we've identified as having the opportunity for some multifamily housing. And that, that, that setback may need to be modified on those housing sites in order to provide the number of housing units that are needed. If we give up on those sites and look elsewhere, then we start to run into other problems like we're going onto slopes or we're going into hillsides. So it's really a balance between how do you accommodate this assignment that we've been given by the state? And still respect and protect the qualities that you all are here to, to do, to protect in your, in your role as commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You, you said that very nicely. I think that the survey that we were seeing the data from strongly supports using those two commercial centers. I'm, I'm not going to say failing, but challenged commercial centers. And this could be, this could be lifeblood for those commercial centers as well as the solution for the housing. And at the rate of failure of shopping centers in this country, we, we would do well to be ahead of the game in figuring them out. So I applaud that direction. I
Sure, Davis.
I hope we can get there.
I'm sorry again, step on your toes, but
Fair enough. You're not stepping on my toes. Don't worry.
Okay.
So, so I've got one more question if I may.
Yes, please.
We received a late correspondence from, from Mr. Brazoni. And I need to ask, my understanding, I was not part of the civilian advisory committee that worked on Maraga Center Specific Plan. I was on this board during that whole process. As best I understand, and I would please like confirmation, as best I understand, there was nothing about MCSP that was not agreed to by all parties concerned, which would include the Brazoni family. Is that accurate? Or am I just making that up?
Is your, is your question whether the ordinance that was adopted by the council for the MCSP implementation, whether the Brazonis agreed to every provision in that ordinance?
My, my understanding is that they were partners in developing that ordinance and were involved in the process of developing it and were in agreement with it when we passed it. Am I, am I wrong?
And let me also distinguish between the MCSP itself, which was in twenty-ten, in twenty-ten, that was adopted. And then the implementation ordinance was adopted in twenty-twenty. And throughout the, throughout the implementation process in twenty-twenty, the Brazoni family submitted a number of letters, a number of concerns with respect to the ordinance. The town did review that correspondence and did make, and did make some changes. But, but I can't speak to whether they agreed to everything. There were certainly correspondence throughout that process. But I do want to also, also note that, that now what we are doing through this, through this process is looking at, you know, the housing element and making, making some changes or programs that will include some changes to the MCSP, including the increasing density and, and addressing, for example, the scenic corridor and some additional issues that we, that have been noted by the town as we're, as we've been implementing the MCSP.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I perhaps over underestimated his, David specifically, agreement with the process. I thought he had been better, better. Okay, thank you. I was surprised to see his letter. And, and Chair Ellis, I, I yield the floor. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I see Commissioner Polsky with his hand raised.
Thank you, Chair Ellis. And first off, just wanted to commend everyone that was involved in the production of this report. It was incredibly thorough, incredibly informative. And you can tell that a lot of time and effort and energy went into this. So as a member of this commission and a member, a citizen of Maraga, we really appreciate all of the effort that has gone into that. It may have been a comment, but wanted to get that in. The question around the report is the structure. And apologies if this has been mentioned already, but the format, is this something that the state has essentially given to us and said, fill in the blanks? Or what was, how was this report produced? How did we decide the, the way it was presented? Are there elements that we included that may not necessarily need to be included? Are there elements that we decided not to include that other municipalities have included? If you just give a little more context around the overall format, I think that'd be very informative.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So the contents are dictated by state law. So almost everything, at least in the body of the report, is something we were required to do. The state does not tell us how we have to organize materials in the document. And sometimes you open a housing element and the policies and programs come first. And all of the background information comes later. The, I would say with respect to the appendices, we put that affirmatively furthering fair housing appendix together. That's all required. Everything in that appendix, it seems, it's very long, it's got a lot of maps, but that's all mandatory now. It didn't used to be. But because it's so large, we felt it was, it fit better in an appendix than in the main document. We're not required to include the results of our resident survey, but we thought it would be informative to include both the resident survey, the student survey, and the balancing act survey. It does make the whole document longer, but that's why it's in an appendix. The sites inventory spreadsheet, that's required. All of those columns are required by state law. The needs assessment, constraints analysis, and the sites inventory chapter, all of that is state law. But we could, we could have organized it a little differently, but that's, that's all in the government code.
And through the chair, the AFFH is also a requirement. So what you're seeing is what we're getting really from ABAG. And then we have to address those specific points for AFFH. That's why AFFH is the way it is.
Thank you. No, no comments on how it was organized. Did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Polsky. Any other commissioners with questions? I see Commissioner Helber and then Commissioner Teal after Commissioner Helber.
Actually, I only have one quick question. I apologize. I should already know the answer to this, but I, I printed this out. Am I correct in understanding that this entire document is the housing element? And if adopted, will be part, part of the municipal plan? Or is it certain sections?
Yes, I, I just want to clarify. So what we provided to the planning commission last week were the six chapters and the five appendices. So after Tuesday, so we provided all that to you on Tuesday. Thursday, we uploaded the final kind of like clean version, which has like a cover and it has like the chapters listed. So that's online. But you have basically the meat and potatoes now.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Helber. Commissioner Teal?
Okay, guys, here we go, okay? Four questions, two for, sorry, three for Stephanie and Barry and two for staff. Kind of touching on Commissioner Polsky's question. Where do you guys think, given the number Where do you guys think, given the number of jurisdictions who have not come into compliance yet, where's the most risk or where do you expect that will receive the most comments or attention from the state?
Go ahead, Stephanie. I think we would both love to answer that question.
So, you know, I think one thing that has caught up a lot of jurisdictions in Southern California and in some of the other regions that are ahead of the Bay Area in terms of schedule is really in that AFFH component of the document. Some of the guidance from that was late breaking for some of those other jurisdictions. And so I think when you're seeing some of these cities that are really far, you know, they've tried to submit and they've been rejected and they've had to go through multiple rounds of revisions. In a lot of cases, there were deficiencies in that section. I think in your case that we're more in the clear on that. That's not to say that HCD won't come up with anything, that they'll say, we want you to analyze this, go deeper on this topic. But we have had some time to adjust to the guidance that's come out from HCD and what they want to see there. And so I don't see that being something that is a big point of risk for you. But it is something that we've seen in a lot of other jurisdictions. You know, I think they, HCD is taking a much closer eye on the programs this time around. So, you know, it's possible that we'll get some comments from them on programs. They do want to see, you know, they want to see a commitment to doing something over the next eight years that will really move the needle. And they're looking for things that will address affirmatively furthering for housing, that will make sure that the sites that you're identifying for housing are reasonably likely to be developed with housing. So, you know, that means not just identifying the sites, but also making sure that the programs speak to actions that you can take to make that development actually possible. So that includes removing governmental constraints. And they, you know, they're looking to see that there's really identified actions rather than just commitments to, you know, studying something or, you know, considering something. If, you know, so to the extent that you're evaluating something over the housing element planning period, they want to see sort of firm steps for when you're going to do that evaluation, what the date is for that. And I think we've done a pretty good job with that. There, there is, you know, some subjectivity in how HCD reviews this. They're looking at the housing element sort of as a holistic, holistic level. So, you know, it can be tricky sometimes to see what worked in one community. You know, they may be looking for something a little bit different based on what your own unique needs are, what the whole package of your programs are, what your sites look like. So, you know, it's possible that they'll come back and say that there are some items there that they want you to, you know, tighten up a little bit. But I think, you know, sort of knowing what they've been saying as they've been looking at some of these other housing elements during this sixth cycle, that we've set you up to be on a pretty, you know, a fairly firm footing so that hopefully it's not, you know, a huge reworking of that component of the document. And then I don't know, Barry, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, one of the challenges is going to be convincing the state that the town is serious about producing affordable housing in the future because the track record in the past hasn't been great. And when you look at the arena for the past cycle and the cycle before that, the town does a pretty good job hitting its above moderate targets, builds a few moderate units and then builds no low income units and no very low income units. And that has been the cycle over and over. And so we are going to be under a magnifying glass saying, we're serious about this. And that the programs that we're proposing will actually produce something, even if it's just one development in the next few years, but something above what has happened in the past few years. And so they're going to look pretty closely at, you know, what are we saying we're going to do to make it easier for a nonprofit developer to come into Maraga and build, even if it's senior housing for lower income seniors? You know, Arinda did that, for example. Danville's building affordable family housing. So what are we going to do in the town? So I think that's going to be the area where they're, they're going to give us the most scrutiny.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Super thorough. You guys have touched on the level of engagement to date. Can you just elaborate on the plan for continuous engagement with the various groups?
Sure. So once this goes out to HCD, our plan is to keep doing outreach. We have, some of it is really that we have other parts of this comprehensive advanced planning initiative that are going to be moving forward at the same time that HCD is reviewing the document. So we're going to be meeting with you as a commission and with the town council, you know, public meetings to talk about general plan amendments and about some of the rezoning language and the objective standards. We also expect to get continued input from property owners and developers during that time period and also keep up the outreach to our neighborhood groups and the civic organizations that we've been meeting with all along. I don't think, you know, where there's, there's not like another survey or something on that scale that's planned. But we're going to keep doing the outreach we've been, that we've been doing on some of the other programs. And Offshaw may want to add to that as well.
Yeah, I just, I just want to state that as part of the the report that's going to council and this one, we did put ads in the paper, fairly large noticeable ads. But beyond that, I have emailed community organizations. I have emailed property owners, developers. I have emailed organizations within Contra Costa County as well. I've also just, you know, reached out to like MOFD, the school district, just to let them know that this is moving forward and that there is more opportunity here for them to comment.
That's great. And it's a more acute question. I guess in both of your opinions, does concentrating housing in and around the two commercial districts help preserve the open space, hillsides, et cetera, of the character that is town of Maraga?
I think it absolutely does because if it didn't, I mean, if we didn't do that, we'd be planning for housing in those areas. So we really have no choice but to focus our development in those areas if we want to preserve those open spaces. I mean, you could say, well, why can't we just build accessory dwelling units? And, and, you know, if, if one out of every seven homes in Maraga added an ADU, we would meet our target. It doesn't work that way. The state won't accept that as a solution. They'll say, you know, maybe you can build 40 ADUs. But if you look at the town and the way it's developed, those are really where the opportunities are.
Gotcha. And a question to the staff on that one particular instance that we saw in Plan View with the 40-foot setback and the existing buildings that are currently built within that, do you know what the closest or what the shallowest setback currently is in that corridor?
So we did share the one on that corridor. There's a recent development. It's the Chase Bank. So that one, I don't know the setback, but I do know that on Via Maraga, it is, which is on Maraga Road. And Via Maraga is the recent development, the one across Weem Center, that's 25 feet. And so, and the other one is Town Center Homes. And Town Center Homes, in some cases it's 17 feet. In some cases it's, it's more. So those are recent housing developments. But on that particular corridor, there's, you have the Canyon Club Brewery, but you also have Chase Bank, which is a recent building.
Chase Bank is where it is, if I may, because that's how close Wells Fargo already was. And it was put in before the implementation for the MSC. The Maraga Center specific plan was codified. It was a mistake on two accounts, but it was passed because there wasn't controlling guidance.
All right. Thank you. No more questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. And thank you for the clarification, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Bodie, I see your hand raised.
Yes, let me lower my hand. Open this up. Thank you, Chair Hillis. Okay. So since we met last week, one of the areas I spent a lot of time doing some research on and focusing on, and one of the items that I was most interested in, in reading the town of Maraga's approach, is around the many mentions of, you know, the grant funding that the town would make use of. And there are millions, no, there are billions of dollars available through nonprofits that I know of. And even reading some other municipalities, their housing elements. And, and again, they mentioned the same thing about that their plans are to go after these grants, to write grants. And, and some of the other housing elements I read, there wasn't, there was the statement, yep, we're going to go after the grants. But then there was also a little bit more about like how they're going to do that and some of the nonprofits that they're already working with. And some of the grants that they're already starting to write. This may be a question more, you know, I'm more just curious or, and, you know, it's maybe geared toward Barry, right? And so, so again, while I'm quite pleased to see the incorporation of the grant application process to augment the funding, which we desperately need, we can't just count on the developers for a lot of this. We have to be aggressive in going after the funding that's available. And my question is, seeing how important it is to the town to, you know, make these dollars available, especially for the infrastructure side, right? Extending School Street, right? I mean, that shouldn't be all on the developer. Perhaps we can get, you know, some additional, you know, like infrastructure funding to get that done. My question is, who is responsible? And again, right, it's just more of a question out of curiosity because your plates are full. And I'm, and, and I'm very well aware of what it takes to write a grant or writing the application to get a grant. Is this up to staff, right? Or do we engage with nonprofit organizations that specialize in this? That can help us write these grants so that we can get awarded these grants to have the funds? Have we begun to identify nonprofits that may be able to assist us? And do we have any idea as to the total dollar amount in housing and infrastructure grants that are available to us? So those are the questions I have. I mean, again, you know, a lot of it is the how, how we're going to do that that I'm always interested in. But I see, you know, I saw grants mentioned, you know, I don't know, at county, you know, I, I think I did a county. I mean, it was over 50 times, like, how are we going to do this? Grants, grants. And so, again, maybe it's a question toward Barry first, but, you know, I'm just more curious of that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Bodie. Happy to take a first shot at that. So, yeah, I think we tailored our implementation program to the size of Maraga and the scale of Maraga staff resources and recognizing that there, it's a, you know, it's relatively small community to some of the other communities that have a housing staff or a housing division or a group of employees who may be writing grants or pursuing grants all the time. And so there's less about grants and financial resources. But we do have some programs particularly related to infrastructure. There's, I know there's a program to pursue grants for infrastructure in the MCSP area and for the extension of School Street. That was the critical one and potentially for a crossing of Laguna Creek over to the, to the west side from School Street. So it's on our radar and the language is in there. But you're, you know, you raise a bigger question, which is there's all this money out there. Who's responsible for going after it? And I think ultimately it is, it's the town and it's the developer and it's other communities too, working together. Some of these things happen through partnerships where there's a group of small communities that say, we don't have the resources to do this on our own. But if we pool our resources with, say, Lafayette and Arinda, suddenly we can pursue a grant that benefits all three communities. And maybe it's for, you know, some kind of housing subsidy or something that's housing related. But yeah, it's an, it's an ongoing need. The county does some coordination, the county Contra Costa. But for the most part, I think it is local initiative that is where this lands.
Thank you. And if I may answer as well and expand on this, there are grants coming up which are called OBAG. They come through the state and they're specifically for infrastructure. But infrastructure is also tied to housing now. So they're going to give you more points if you're doing certain kinds of housing. And so if you, every community is wanting to write grants and every community is wanting, you know, the money that's coming through the state. But it's all tied to, land use and transportation are tied together. So the more we can show we have a need, a better equitable need for more diverse housing, for more diverse income levels, and that we have a shovel-ready project, that's the key, is a shovel-ready project. That, you know, puts us higher priority because that tells the state that we are ready to go.
And Commissioner Bodie, does that end your questions?
Yeah, yeah, it really does. I just want to make sure that we, that we're keen to that, right? And that it is at the local level, you know? And that's based on, and that's based on what I'm seeing too. And I think that's, you know, you know, a really great idea to pool resources. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so I saw Commissioner or Vice Chair Luster's hand raised, but it's down. And I also see Commissioner Teal. Vice Chair Luster, did you still have a question?
I still do.
Okay.
Just one, just one. Through our discussions here and great segue from Director Hamid about transportation. I'm looking through the Chapter Six, you know, goals, policies and programs. And forgive me if I'm not seeing anything, but I'm not seeing anything about increasing our public transportation. Is that something we can include in our housing goals? Because I just feel like logistically, if you're having low and very low income residences, there is a high chance that they don't have vehicles or, you know, everything is not, all of their needs are not met in Maraga. They will have to travel outside of Maraga. We need, you know, buses and that sort of thing to make them want to move here. There have to be certain amenities and things like better public transportation would be huge, even for students who already are trying to get in and out of Maraga. So is that in Chapter Six somewhere and I'm not seeing it? Is it not included anywhere? Can it be included?
That's a great point. And I don't believe it's included in Chapter Six right now. You know, one thing, and I will say, I agree with you and I think we should include something about improving public transportation. But I also want to point out, so this is one part of the general plan and there's a transportation element in the general plan. And the transportation element is where you'd go to see policies and programs supporting public transportation and expansion of transit and so forth. So they work together and, you know, but, but even a cross-reference to the policies and that other element would be helpful. I think you make a really good point about the other qualities, not just public transit, but there may be other things that are needed to support that population. So thank you for that. We'll look, we'll look into adding something.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Teal, for your patience. Please proceed.
Oh, sure. Just a follow-up question on shovel-ready projects. Do we know of anything just through our outreach and correspondence with various developers in these two commercial districts? If anyone is ready or near-ready or if there's preliminary engagement from an application standpoint with planning staff?
Well, we do not have any applications currently. The potential is St. Mary's, but they are at the beginning stages of just getting the site rezoned. And they are, you know, just really, really at the, at the beginning stages. They still have a while to go.
Got it. And to the chair, as a follow-up, I think we previously discussed there would be a way to report as far as like the status update, how we're performing against our plan a number of years out. Yeah. Mr. Miller, you previously mentioned that.
Yes, there's a program in the, in Chapter Six to do exactly that, to do a report out on how the town is progressing on implementing the MCSP and also meeting with, with landowners regularly.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any other questions? I'll proceed with a few of mine though. Through the discussion, some of them have been answered. For example, wondering what the setback was on my former house, which I do wish was not featured as the primary home every time the Via Maraga came up. But we're guarding those 40-foot setbacks at the MCSP. Just to clarify with staff one more time, the only place
just to clarify with staff one more time, the only place in town where we are proscriptive about what the setback should be is at the Moragas Center, is that correct?
Yes.
And when did that, uh, did that go, come into place? Was that with the implementation of the MCSP?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do we have data or has, uh, staff collected data to let us know what along these scenic corridors the average setback is? So I know that we have the var- uh, variance from what we showed on the, uh, on the image that was presented, showing that historically it has been less, significantly less than 40 feet. We know the Via Moraga was at, uh, 20, 25 feet. I know that the, uh, the condos that are just north of that, um, are probably within the range of that. I'm wondering if there is, um, an average, um, setback along the scenic corridors that tends to, tends to win out in Moraga.
Uh, we, we didn't do that level of analysis or study. Right now, what we're doing is just identifying possible constraints. But if this is something that the planning commission wants us, uh, wants to make a recommendation that we continue to analyze and study this and come back at a later point, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Um, and that would go to another, like, the question that I would have, which I think is more, from what you just said, uh, Director Hamid, I think it might be work for the, the future, is that, uh, if the only place in town that we actually have, um, uh, uh, something which is non-subjective is in, uh, the MCSP and that's not working for us, uh, how will, can we develop a standard that will work, that potentially can, uh, that's not just automatic and provide review or to provide either the planning commission or the council the ability to review it? Uh, one-size-fits-all doesn't seem right. Are there other towns that have tackled this and have come up with a solution on along scenic corridors like ours? That isn't just one-size-fits-all?
Sure, we could definitely take a look at this when we further analyze it and study it and come back at a later point.
Thank you. Um, and then another is, um, this is more on process after submission to HCD. So, uh, you, you know, the town does have, we have all these meetings, we've been doing meetings for the better part of a year. I'm sure you were working on this even significantly before then. Uh, so we get to the point of submission, uh, HCD doesn't like what we've presented. Uh, what's the town's recourse other than, do we have the ability to say, well, we really thought that this was great? Is there an appeal process? What does it look like if we get to the, uh, to that point and we still are really committed to, to what we come up with through our process?
Um, yeah, Stephanie and I have both been through this with other cities and it is iterative. And there's a lot of conference calls with HCD on some of this stuff. And to be honest, the initial letter that they send is often extremely vague. And so you look at it and you think, what are we supposed to do with this feedback? And it often requires a follow-up call and you draft some language and say, is this what you meant? And they say, yeah, that looks good. Um, the challenge on our end is we like to vet the language with a commission or council before submitting it back to HCD. Often it's a policy decision or a program tweak that has some fairly potentially significant impacts. So the process can take a while and, um, they used to be able to do this almost instantaneously. Now you have to wait, um, you know, it can be a month or two months before they'll respond back. Uh, so it, it does create a challenge. Um, I think that's one of the reasons we, we're, we're trying really hard to get it right on the first submittal. Um, that said, I know when we get our le- letter back, we will come to the commission and council and share that with you. And, um, you know, hear what your thoughts are about some of what we're proposing to do in response, um, through the, through the public review draft that'll come out at the end of the year.
And outside of the, I think my question was more towards outside of the, uh, the staff, uh, negotiation on trying to find a way to, if there's wiggle room within what they're asking for and what, uh, what we've already agreed to in, in a public hearing, is, is there a recourse that a town might have if, uh, state staff and town staff can't resolve what, uh, the appointed or elected representatives of the town want in terms of, uh, like, is there a process there for where, okay, well, we tried, but they're just asking for more than we're willing to give? Is there an, an official appeal process?
There is not, there is not an appeal process at this point.
Okay, so we, so it would be either take what the state says or, uh, go to court is, that's the course?
Like to hear what, uh, what Karen has to say.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what, that's my understanding. And typically, you know, there are ramifications, um, for not having an HCD-certified housing element. So you're really, as, you know, Barry mentioned, it, it is a process continuing to work with HCD on revisions, on language, you know, ha- having those discussions is typically the ways some of these get resolved. And, and staff did have that experience with, for example, the ADU ordinance, where there were a number of, um, discussions and conference calls with HCD. And then, you know, obviously that was a, you know, not as long a document as the housing element. But, um, but it was instructive in terms of, you know, the process. And then, um, got to the point where there was something that staff supported and HCD supported and we moved on.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to sit, make it sound like I'm anticipating us being high conflict. I just wanted to know what the process would be should conflict arise. And those are my questions. I did have questions though for everyone here before we go to public comment. And I did see Commissioner Teal with his hand raised again. Uh, uh, did you have a question or, okay. Um, whether or not everyone needs a break, we're at eight oh seven. Um, how are folks feeling? Do we wanna take, uh, five or 10 minutes? I'm seeing heads shaking, uh, yes. Um, so, uh, uh, apologies to folks who are here. We do have a few people, uh, at least we did in the participant room. Let's plan on coming back here at, uh, let's try to just be even about it. Let's come back at eight, uh, oh, eight, eight eighteen. Thank you. I'm gonna turn off your camera and your microphone. All right, looks like, uh, most of the commission has returned. Uh, do we have, uh, town staff as well? See Director Hamid. Just give folks another couple seconds. Um, while, uh, we're waiting for everyone else to return, I can, um, uh, discuss the rules for public comment. See if any of our three attendees have comments. Um, at this time, we will open for public, the public comment portion of this meeting as they pertain to this item. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item, please utilize the raise hand feature of this webinar. And we will call on you, remember to state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes. See if any of the folks over there, we do have one attendee with their hand raised. Staff, can we please, uh, move them over to the meeting? Thank you, Ashley Coats, please, uh, it looks like you've taken yourself on mute, uh, please proceed. And, uh, Director Hamid, please keep time.
Hello, this is Ashley Coats of 392 Paseo Grande. I have a question about whether we could add an item to Program 11, which was just carried forward and nothing new has been proposed so far. It's about, um, funding sources, it's mentioned subsidies, but I think, I don't know if subsidy would be the right word for this. We don't have anything that's Moraga-specific. And there are some jurisdictions that have considered or actually implemented the idea of a real estate transfer tax that gets applied to an affordable housing fund. So I would like to see us look into whether that's a possibility, uh, for Moraga.
Thank you for your comments. And I can, um, ask staff when we get to that point, uh, to address the question. Uh, any other public comments? I don't see any of the others. So at, with that, I'm gonna close, uh, the public comment. And, uh, staff, if you wouldn't mind taking a stab at the, the question that was asked by Ms. Coats?
Yes. Okay, I think you may be saying the same thing. Um, I just wanted to say we would, we would be happy to, um, include program recommendation around looking for additional local funding sources. Um, we probably would say such as, uh, real estate transfer tax or other. We wouldn't, I don't think we would specify the particular funding source, but it's certainly reasonable to add something like that to the, to the draft.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, um, again, I just wanted to, to thank staff for the breathing. So again, I just wanted to thank staff for the presentation. I thought that it was really well done and very substantive, as many of my colleagues have mentioned. We're now at the Commissioner comments section of the meeting. Do any of the commissioners have any comments they'd like to offer at this point? And if there are any, any suggestions for tweaks to the document, I'm going to ask Director Hamed to please keep a tally of that, we can go over it at, at the end of comments. I see Vice Chair Lester.
I wanted to add, as I discussed earlier, the bit about transportation, if we can. If we're able to add, yeah, something about increasing our public transportation as part of encouraging low and very low income housing residents. My comments would be that I kind of just wanted to say overall that the state of California has enacted all these laws with the goal of increasing housing. But they've done it with a very broad stroke and they have not done it, you know, taking into consideration the minute details and nuances of each town. And they are not taking into consideration, as we've seen from the legal courses that towns have taken, that they, they don't worry about the fire, they don't worry about the evacuation, they don't worry about traffic and getting in and out of our town. They don't know the little details that we have in Maraga here. And that's okay, however, with that in mind, I think it's really the, the job of the town, all of us, and I guess more specifically the council and the commission, to make sure that we are really trying to uphold the vision of our general plan and the vision of what Maragans have for Maraga. And I think that most of us that move here have this idea, we come, it's small, it's quaint, it's all of these things that we like about it, we like that it's not built up. We like that there aren't skyscrapers, we like that it's beautiful. We would have chosen to move to Walnut Creek if we wanted to live in Walnut Creek, or stay in the city if we wanted to live in the city. So I, I think we should have to keep in mind that just because the state is asking for something, it doesn't mean we have to give it away. We can abide by the laws that the state is requiring of us. However, we also need to try to hold on to the things that make Maraga, Maraga, keep our parameters intact where we can. You know, the priorities that the state has right now can and will change over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. And we don't necessarily have to change as drastically on their spectrum as they do. So the other thing is with Program 33, I would just like to, this is page 523 in Chapter 5. I just wanted to recommend that the town council review these guidelines, design guidelines that the staff has brought up for review. Review them very carefully and examine them and make sure that you sort of take into consideration, you know, what purpose do they serve, you know, the reason why they're there in the first place? Will getting rid of them affect the character of our town? Will we still be able to properly assess design and preserve the beauty that we have in our neighborhoods? And also can we offer similar language to revise to make sure they are less subjective, but also without eliminating entirely that perimeter, that parameter that, that we've set for the town for development? I just want to make sure that the planning commission and the town council has another opportunity to review the fine tuning of the language for the code, which I think we will in terms of, you know, slopes and scenic corridors. And I want to make sure that we ensure that our code reflects also sort of a modernization and that the town is aware and supportive of modern development and design tactics and those sorts of things. And not to be critical, but I support building on slopes. And having worked as a private permitter in Malibu, most development is on slopes on the coastal, within five miles of the coast. It's very difficult to permit, but there are so many ways to develop on slopes. And if you've been anywhere in the San Francisco area, which I think we all have, there are hillsides everywhere. And I don't think that a slope precludes development. And I'm not saying develop on our protected ridge lines, not at all, but there are hills all down within nestled in that we could build up and make very beautiful and, and again, design and build in a beautiful way. And those are my comments for tonight, thank you.
Vice Chair, any other commissioners with comments? Don't be shy, I see Commissioner Davis.
I've never been accused of being shy, Chair Hillis. Actually, that's not true, I'm really very shy. I'm, I'm going to follow up with what Vice Chair Lester was headed towards, I thought. It is our job to uphill, uphold the vision of this town, the commission and the council. It's also the town staff's job to uphold the vision of this town as articulated by the voters and residents in this town. In line with that, I can't support any plan that goes forward with a proposal, whether it's only ephemeral or fictitious or transitory or not, to get rid of one of our ordinances that protects the quality of our town. I can't support it. Anymore than I would support it if it suggested we were going to build on top of Mahaloan Ridge. We have indeed a state that is engaged in significant social engineering, shades of the 1960s frankly. And although we are told this is all about housing in the legislation from the state, that does seem to be the, on the face of it, trust. That's not the underlying text in any way. This is social engineering at its finest. It doesn't mean we all need to roll over and play dead for it. I am supportive of our helping people come to our community. I think we should be taking care of the people who are already in our community, who are barely hanging on. My, my family of five is spending 80% of my income on our housing. There are plenty of us who have given up everything in order to be here. Letting other people jump the line tastes just a little bit sour. But I would mention that we are not taking care of all of the people who already live here in our apartments. We pretend like this is a single family dwelling home, uh, town, it's not. I haven't, I haven't seen your careful statistics director, I mean, well enough, I really appreciate seeing them, by the way, in this book, the statistics on our town. So I don't really know, but I would bet that a third of our town lives in multifamily housing of one nature or another, other than single family home. Is that about a rough estimate, 30%? I think it is, I don't know, I don't have the book open to the right page. We don't do anything to include people in those neighborhoods. Of course, they're all invited to come play, but we don't reach out and help them be members. My Kiwanis Club has 70 people in it. I don't know that any of them come from other than single family home neighborhoods. We're not bringing the people in we already have. And we're going to pretend that it's going to be a good thing to bring in 300 more residential units full of people who will need our help? That's crazy. We don't have buses, we don't have evacuation routes, we are surrounded by wildland wildfire zones. And this plan beautifully addresses everything the state has asked for. I think, I see no reason to expect the state to say, oh my goodness, you guys aren't putting in any effort. It does nothing to address reality. We are subject to ABAG, air regulations, they're not addressed in here. We are subject to regional transportation goals and objectives. We're subject to global warming goals and objective at the state, the county and the town level. None of that is addressed in here. This is a great social engineering project, but it is not a plan forward for this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. And did you have any of the, the items that you wanted to offer into the, the list of tweaks?
Yes, get rid of the plan to gut our, our scenic corridors. It'd be just as realistic to talk about building underground dwelling units. We haven't looked at that, why not? You could put a thousand units underneath those shopping centers. It'd be glorious. Okay, I say that only half tongue in cheek. We can do anything we set our minds to doing. Changing the nature of the town is what we've been asked not to do. And I, I frankly, I'm surprised that we're not honoring that. Because in fact, that's what we have all been asked to not do. Our residents in their survey were pretty loud and clear. I'm very pleased to finally see the data, thank you. We've talked about it for a couple of months, I was hoping to see it before we got to this meeting, but we have finally seen the data. Our residents are crystal clear. They like the town they're in. They're also crystal clear that they want other people to be included, and I'm all for it. But I don't see a whole lot of appetite for changing the town in the course of doing that. Our task is to keep this town and bring in more people. I think we can do that. And that's, that's, I think, the approach I would really like to see a state going forward. We have been given the opportunity by the state to put extra units in everybody's backyard, to divide everybody's property and build more units. Those were awesome, awesome opportunities, I'm sure. I would much rather see programmed development. Our shopping centers are ripe for this. I do think it's possible to build units without, without having to build them four stories high next to the road. That's just, that's just a non-starter for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, I hear your heartfelt comments. Commissioner Polsky, see your hand raised.
Hey Chair Hillis, couple editing points. Chapter 4, page 28, six lines from the bottom, there is an, an if, which should be an of. IF instead of, or it should be OF instead of IF. Same chapter, Chapter 4, page 29, there's an extra bullet point by the words summer. Just caught a couple, caught those, thought I'd call them out. And a couple other comments. Within the report and, and on some of these calls we've had, senior housing has been mentioned. And I don't know if we've done a deep dive on it, but putting a flag in this, I, I'd love to understand a little bit more about, around, around senior housing, around the desire to have it within the community. I just don't know very much about it, you know, I, I have anecdotally my parents who, you know, I don't see moving into senior housing, I see them staying within their house forever, or at least until we, you know, pry them out kicking and screaming, but would be good to understand that. Yeah, it's been mentioned a couple times on here that that's a way to free up housing units. You know, I don't think this is the place for a Prop 13 discussion, but like, people aren't moving out of their houses. And so I just would love to understand why we flagged senior housing for certain parts of the Maraga Center and, and how we think that that will, how we think that fits into the fabric of the community. So I'll stop there, but would love to more, but know, learn more about senior housing. I, I really appreciated, similar to Commissioner Davis, seeing the public comments, both the town and the St. Mary's students. A couple
Yep.
A couple comments there, I would caution against the vocal minority. You know, I think that the town comments, it was a thousand people and it was 800 that actually live here in a community of 16,000. So with any issue, as we've seen nationally, there's a very vocal contingent and a lot of times that ends up being a minority of, of the folks. And, but I did think it was, it was interesting to see all of those comments. And, and one of the things that I saw within this report that I actually really, really liked and would love to see more of, within Chapter 4, there was a section starting on page 25 called Other Considerations, that talked about slopes, talked about flood plain, talked about fire, talked about other things that have been considered when we are putting together our housing element. And I think, you know, having just been a commissioner for all of four months now and, you know, it comes up in the general course of conversations and there are some very frequent things that people like to say when that comes up. And, you know, it's, hey, what are you doing right now? We're working on the housing element, we have to add 1,118 units. Oh, the traffic, oh, the fire, oh, this. And it's very like quick and canned responses that are very easy to say, not in my backyard. And I think that this, the other considerations section, if we were able to create, you know, what we call in my industry like a one pager, you know, essentially it's like, hey, look, this is like, why do we have to do this? And here's, here's some responses to some of the things that people just throw their hands up and say, we can't do it. I think it would be super beneficial to this town because I think it, we, we need to work on changing the narrative because it's really easy to say, well, I'm here and I really like it and I don't want to see a change and that's it. And, you know, that's just not going to happen, state's not going to allow it. And so I think helping educate the population and frankly, helping educate the vocal minority will go a long way within this community to help create the sense that, yes, we're being mandated to do this, but yes, this is also a good thing and yes, we've done it in a very thoughtful way. So would love to see the town and, you know, to follow up on Commissioner Teal's comment about continued outreach, I'd love to see something that just kind of addresses quickly where I can say, yeah, hey, here's a website or here's, you know, here's something really quickly that you can go look and, and it answers those questions. Because I've tried to have conversations and hopefully I've been able, been able to thoughtfully answer them. But I think if we, if there was a document that really addressed that, I think that would go a really long way. And in, in the interest of time, wrapping up here with the St. Mary's responses, I think it is very, very apparent that we need to work very, very hard with the college and with the students to encourage, encourage them to live here. And I think that, that it is a net positive to have the students living within the community for a number of reasons. And, and they want to live here, and I think there's a huge opportunity. And not every town has a college within it. And so let's, let's take that opportunity and really, you know, create something special within this town. And then the last point that I would leave everyone with is that Maraga is a great place to live. It is not an island. We do not live in the west, in the middle of a cornfield, we live in the Bay Area. You know, th- this is one of the highest densities within this, the, the country. It's a huge employment center, huge innovation center. Yes, it's great that we can, can see ridge lines and hillsides, but we also, you know, we, we are residents of Maraga, but we're also residents of the Bay Area, residents of the state of California. And so while I think, you know, back when this town was formed, it was great that, that it was a conversion of pastures and orchards and whatnot. The reality of where we are in 2022 is, is different than when this town was founded. And I think we need to take that in consideration when making these decisions. I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Polsky. Any other commissioners have comments? I see Commissioner Helber.
First, I wanted to compliment staff and all town staff that I'm sure was involved in this and all the consultants. This is a credible amount of document to, and backup information to go through. And I hope I did it somewhat justice. One of my larger global takeaways that actually has me feel a little bit, probably more important than any of my other comments, was about the tone and the text of the overall staff itself. We're very used to documents being such as this, that are going to be ultimately adopted, hopefully, as part of our housing element and our muni code. Being impartial and being informative documents and not leaning in any one particular policy direction. And I think while this document is great, there are some areas that are, we could consider for redrafting or improvement.
And I'll highlight some of them, but kind of throughout the entire document, it seems to verge on advocating policy that the town has not yet approved. And even though we may have gotten direction to go look at it, my concern is we submit this document, this draft to the HCD, we adopt the housing element, maybe we decide not to do inclusionary housing, maybe we decide not to do a scenic corridor adjustment. And then we come back how many ever years later, and we go to update this thing again, and HCD says, well, you didn't do the things you indicated you were going to do last time. And they're more stringent on us, so I'm just, I think we can say the same things, but how we write them, how we draft them, and the tone at which we draft them, I think is important. An example, it's a very minor example, and I apologize to use this one, but on page one point four, we're talking about multifamily housing in the second to last paragraph. And again, this is very minor, but it says, there have been almost no multifamily housing construction. I would say limited, because we did build that entire project off of Maraga Way. And it's almost like we're begging HCD to not give us credit for it. Along those same lines, if we go to section four point two nine, the very last paragraph, we're saying one potential way to do, we're talking now about contributing for affordable housing. And the last sentence on this page says, one potential way to do this would be to apply inclusionary housing requirements across the entire town, rather than only multifamily areas. Well, yeah, that's a very factual statement and that is true. But how does HCD view this if we don't do it? Another example on five sixteen would be about the scenic corridors, where we say, while preserving the scenic corridors is of great importance, it must be balanced with other goals. I think there's a way, that's really leading, and I think there's another way we could draft that without potentially having an issue down the road. On page five point three seven, in this paragraph, I guess this is the second paragraph, that says the number of steps. We say, as currently structured, the plan development process is not aligned well with the Maraga general plan goals and policies. It's talking about changing from a three-step process to a more, similar to the plan unit process, which I do support. What do we do if we don't approve that? I think I belabored that point, I don't, no need to go over anymore, but I think if someone were just to read through the document in its entirety and with a fresh eye to make sure that we're not putting in leading statements. A comment on accessory dwelling units on four twenty-three. I'm glad to see we are giving ourselves credits for ADUs. But I question if we are under projecting the calculations, I'm not saying we're going to satisfy a substantial portion of our arena allocation from this, but saying we're only going to build thirty-two units over the course of eight years seems, seems pretty under projecting. We just passed that new ADU policies and procedures, and while the market has changed, I would, I would be surprised if we only produce thirty-two in the next eight years. On section five point three eight, we're talking about the design review process. And I thought it was kind of a lost opportunity to give ourselves a little bit of credit, where we talk about combining the design review board and the planning commission. We are, by that fact, truncating the process, and we should give ourselves credit for that. It's something that staff, you know, proposed and we did, and I think it does make the process faster. Those were my general comments.
Commissioner Helber, if I can just ask, so you didn't direct those as items to be added into Director Hameed's list, and I'm not sure if she was keeping tabs on those, but were those suggestions for edits, because I agreed with every edit that you suggested?
I don't think we need to wordsmith today, but I think if staff could go back and take an honest look at it, I am fully confident that staff will follow through on our intent.
Great, Director Hameed, I would just ask if, he did do a lot of work there, if there is any wordsmithing with those specifics and if he can be taken more general, I think it's a, it's a good point.
We can take a look at those.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions, I mean, comments, I'm sorry.
I could follow up with Commissioner Helber's last comment. Not only have we combined DRB and Planning Commission, but in the same relative period of time, we've streamlined permitting. And we have, we have accepted or perhaps created quite a bit, quite a bit of by right development. Those are all part of how we have made development easier and should be reflected, or we are participating in making development easier. However, one wished to cast that. It's been a general thrust for about five years in this town that we are making development easier and I think it's yielded some fruit, if I were a developer, I'd be, I'd be all, all tears over what's happened, it's pretty, pretty good. Won't add any more adroit to that or not, but it's a good place to take it. Also in line with Commissioner Helber's points, there are a lot of things in this document that say should. Should is a totally loaded term. There's nothing in here that we should do, we might want to do, we are considering doing, but should makes it sound a whole lot like mommy's telling us what to approve. I didn't say that as gracefully as Commissioner Helber, but I think, I think that's even lying with the comment. Are we telling the council what they should do? They're not telling you should. So somebody's telling council what they should do, and I don't think that's anybody's role on staff, your staff advisors. We recommend, we suggest, here are some things we, we think would work, should is the wrong verb. Thank you.
I think those comments are, they both gel together very well, and if I may just harmonize slightly, if you're going to be presenting something, especially when you don't, your scene is not having a good track record of doing things, it might be good to sing your praises to show what you've actually done as you try to demonstrate that you're really showing good faith and trying to meet the state's requests. With that, are there any other commissioner comments? I see Commissioner Teal.
Yeah, two would just be, one is just to follow up on continuous engagement, Commissioner Davis, you mentioned the residents in existing multifamily and getting an understanding of them through survey, I think Barry had mentioned there was something around ten percent respondents from multifamily or residents in apartments, so it just suggests continuous engagement with existing residents in multifamily housing, to the extent that they can be involved in understanding paths forward or into other forms of housing as is developed within the community. And then the other was in regards to pursuing grant funding for infrastructure. So my curiosity is what can we do to further encourage and support staff in pursuing grant funding and supportive infrastructure for this greater development? So, that's it.
Sorry, thank you, Commissioner Teal, any other comments from the commission? I will add some of my own then, I, I really do thank staff and our consultants for all of the hard work that they did to pull this document together. This has really been a long journey that we've all been on mostly together, though we've been doing these long meetings, you've been doing these long meetings with us and also providing us all of the research, fielding all of our questions, you know, we, thank you for, for what you've been doing. And I, hopefully, any of the, the comments we're making are seen as we're trying to be constructive to continue this on, as we know that you have been doing really human labor here to get us to where we are. To that point, I think my comments have been made several times in the past that a lot of the things that the state has been putting on us lately have been heavy-handed. I think that the vice chair described it as one size fits all, and I think that's apt. The, there is a housing crisis, but when you try to have a, a single forceful way of doing things, it doesn't always meet the needs of communities that, you know, are slightly outside of the mold, as I've mentioned in several previous meetings, since then, the period of time that my family has lived here, I can't tell you how many times one or more of the, of the main arteries getting in and out of this town, or even some of the, the other smaller tributaries have been closed. Meaning if something were to happen while a bridge was out, or while P Gini was rebuilding a, a gas pipeline on one of the roadways, or while we have a sinkhole, we're really in a bad way. And so the, the comments that a lot of the, the, we've heard from members of our community, they're not just nimbyism, it is a legitimate fear based in reality, that if something were to happen, what happens to us? And I think that that is something which I think the fact that, that staff did place in our plan a comment, or one of our programs about wildfire, is, is really key, it's something that it, it needs to be addressed and some of the ways the state has handled things, it doesn't really help to make our community feel secure. That said, I, I, I do believe that, you know, we can do a degree of lemonade making out of, out of lemons in this particular go-around. I would continue to remain more fearful of what happens on the next housing element that we are going to be going through in eight years, as we have even fewer places to look to for where we can build. Maraga made, people in Maraga made a decision a long time ago not to have a highway built through here. There is actually a phantom highway that was supposed to be built through here, it's one of the reasons why Reem Center was built. It was supposed to come through from Oakland, and it's, you know, a lot of our initial planning was all built on the idea that there was going to be a highway here. There is not going to ever be a highway coming through Maraga, and if that's the case, how do we safely get us around the, in a community that's going to have, you know, maybe another five to ten thousand more people? That's not an unrealistic estimation based on the number of housing, of houses that we're going to be adding to this community potentially, in the not-too-distant future. But again, I was, I said lemonade out of lemons, so this community is one that has two untapped gems, which are, are two shopping areas, which this really is our community's opportunity to make Maraga something that, you know, we all love this place, we came here for the schools, we got past the fact that there, you know, as I think we've said in other meetings, there wasn't a lot of there there, and began to love the fact that there isn't a lot of here here, and we like that, and we like the open spaces. But at the same time, we do have a university, we have, we do have a need for places for us to go eat, for us to recreate, for us to have entertainment with our family, and these two centers are where that's going to happen if we do that in Maraga. And I really hope that, you know, the town really is able to capitalize on this opportunity that's, you know, not given to be that, but something which really can make this a place that we all will want to live in hopefully into our elder years, and maybe our children and grandchildren can live here too, if we can figure out a way to make the housing even slightly more affordable. Enough on the sophistry, though, I do have actually a specific comment that I would like to add to the hopper, which is, if I can turn to the right page here, on, we're on chapter five, page five four. This is just along the same lines as, I think, where, in essence, were mentioned by Commissioners Helber and Davis. I have a little bit of, I have a lot of concern actually with the way the, the last paragraph right above Maraga Center specific plan is written. This is in reference to, I read this as how we should look at what is going to happen with our governing documents, and I'm concerned that the way the language is written, that it constrains councils of the future to, to actions which they haven't taken yet. It says here in the last two sentences, the second phase of the update, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, will include comprehensive revisions to the remaining elements. This should effectively remove the constraints identified here and provide a coordinated framework for meeting future housing needs. I don't think it needs to be said that way, so that, so that it actually is prejudging what actions our appointed bodies and elected bodies will be taking. I think that the first sentence, we, the, where, where I think it goes a little heavy is the word comprehensive, and my suggestion would be, well, address revisions to the remaining elements, I think that's a more good faith discussion of what may transpire. The, the next sentence, which I think is, is the one that does really go too far, this, instead of this should effectively remove, I would say this will consider the constraints identified here. Again, it's the discussion that we had, I think even Chair, Vice Chair Lester raised earlier, was that the constraints identified, we're not prejudging what the, what the decision is going to be on those constraints, but to say that we should effectively remove them, I think that that would begin to go in more of the direction of us prejudging in a document what future decisions would be. And let me just go through and be sure I have a few other flags here, and I want to be sure that we. Per the comment that was raised on our last meeting and discussion, I am very pleased with how staff has addressed to leave open-ended the discussion on inclusionary housing. I think that that is, it was addressed both, I think, on page five twenty-one. Whether the requirement applies throughout the town or only in the two commercial districts, it shows the openness there. It's also addressed on one of the programs, and I may not have flagged it because I was just tapped up, here it is, Program fourteen. Instead of saying ten percent of all units in the future, it says just inclusionary requirement, and, and above that says zoning districts to be included, which implies that it can be specified which can be included, and I'm happy with the way that that is written. Then I had a question on Program twenty-one regarding the Reem Center Public Realm Plan. One of the sentences that leads on it in the next page goes, the plan should help achieve the longstanding goal of revitalizing the entire Reem Center area as a community focal point. I know from, from discussions with staff that, that Reem Center area is actually an operationalized term in our ordinances, but I do think that it might be a good idea to add the statutory code reference there, so that if anyone were to look at this, they know that that's actually a defined term, and it's not just something vague that can be interpreted later in the future. And then I am also just wanted to congratulate staff going into the attachment, let me tell you which one it is. It is attachment, Appendix D, Student Survey Report. The extra work that staff and our consultants did to actually solicit opinions from the, the students at St. Mary's College, I know when it came up in the past in our, in, I believe it was our last joint meeting, all of the discussion was pretty much anecdotal on what we think that students might, might want, or that we, where we think if we were trying to put ourselves back in their place. This is hearing directly from the students, and I know that initially it wasn't successful in hearing from them, and I can, where I congratulate is you actually worked with the university to figure out what the best way was to reach these students so that we could hear from them. And, you know, a lot of the comments that I, when I read through, I remembered being a starving graduate student and trying to figure out how I was going to buy groceries and pay the bills and all those other things. It was, it was a hard thing, and to see that that is something that members of our community, the students at St. Mary's are experiencing today, I think it just speaks again to that this is, that we really do need to hear their voice. Hearing also how, you know, a lot of the, or some of the areas, we'll say, that some of them live in along Ascot and Donald Drive are older and not necessarily having the amenities that the, the students were looking for. And the, just hearing the voice of them to know that this is going to be a part of the process going forward. I really congratulate staff for finding a way for us to be able to hear that voice. I really congratulate staff for finding a way for us to be able to hear that voice. Um, with that, um, I know that we, were there any other comments or items to add to the list that the commission may have? Seeing none, I wanted to see Director Amid. Um, I know you've been keeping a tally of that as we go. I didn't see anyone disagree with any of the comments that were raised. Um, can we take that as our list of suggestion, um, suggested amendments? I know we have to take a motion on actually recommending this forward. Um, how, what's the, the appropriate way for us to, to try to incorporate some of these changes and move this forward? Do we have to have it all written out in amendment or?
Let me just briefly summarize and then you can add clarifications if you need to. Because these are the recommendations that I will um put forward to council for next week. So let me just state what I heard. Um, the first one is um where it's a little vague about um. Economic prosperity instead include economic diversity. Um, pursue, um, be a little bit more, um, uh, look at the language for infrastructure grants. Uh, where we have the programs and policies for that. Um, there was a um. Um, if we can further clarify and add, uh, encourage uh public transportation. Um, and then Commissioner Helber had some specific comments. I noted them, so I will go back to them. Uh, and uh, I know he had a number of those comments, so I can take a look at those specifically. Uh, throughout the document, look at the language where it's prescriptive and says should. Um, and instead modify the language so it is more um considerations. Uh, continue to analyze and evaluate. And one of the suggestions was what is the data on the scenic quarters for um projects? And what are other towns doing? Uh, inclusionary housing, okay with the proposed red line edits. Um, there was a suggestion and it was a public suggestion from a member of the public. About including language such as real estate and um transfer taxes for affordable housing. Uh, and then on page five dash four specifically modify some of that language. And then on Reim Center area define the term. More clearly about what the Reim Center area is.
It's a good list. I.
What I have so far.
Okay, so um, in like, if there's no other discussion, does uh?
If I could, Eric, Gary.
Yes, sir.
I know we did just get a public comment about a real estate transfer tax. That is something that would be applied broadly across all real estate transactions. Rather than a focused application to people who are getting a upzoning. And um similarly to the inclusionary housing ordinance. I think that is a, a too broad of an application and while we could say let's look into it, I don't think we should. A, I don't support it and B, I don't think we should look into it for the entire town. It should be only applied in very specific areas.
And if I may, I, Commissioner Helber, was your suggestion to, to strike that and have that just noted as public comment? Or was it to amend it to for more, look into more for more specific application?
I think we can note it as public comment.
Don't, don't taxes have to be voted on? We can't. And just throw a tax out there, right?
No, that depends on the type of, type of tax, but certainly it would either need, need a vote or um an ordinance. Or a specific ordinance adopted by the town council, depending on how it's implemented. Oh, you're right. We, it, it takes subsequent actions.
Again, this is a comment from the public, so does the commission want to consider it?
My suggestion, it would be, uh, sound like where uh Commissioner Helber was going was to have it noted as public comment in the, in the minutes. Um, which can be then uh reviewed by the council for further consideration. Um, but in terms of the specific uh, um, uh, edits that the uh, uh, the commission was reviewing. I think the, the ones that we all explicitly stated that were on your list are, are I think what we should limit it to.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Helber. And uh, with that, is, is anyone open to making a motion?
I saw move to make a motion. Of everything Director Amid's summarized in terms of her comments.
With the, and that's uh just to clarify, and I, so Commissioner Helber made the motion, Commissioner Teal seconded. And that is with the exception of the, of the, the clarification we just made with the move, uh, moving of this public suggestion to public comment. And with that, we can uh take a roll call vote. Let me go back to my list so I can be sure I keep everyone's name here uh in order. Uh, Vice Chair Lester.
Yes, can I just clarify that we're motioning to move forward with the recommendations and the draft of this report? That's what we're motioning?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, got it. Yay.
Uh, Commissioner Bodie.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Helber.
Yes.
Commissioner Polsky. I, Commissioner Teal.
Aye.
And I to Chair Alissam, an aye. Uh, the motion carries. And with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to routine and other matters, which I don't show anything under this.
To the chair, um, I didn't hear, but did Commissioner Davis say aye or nay?
He said nay.
Oh, okay.
We can't put this forward to council until we've reviewed the changes. Those were significant.
I think that was a question to uh, to the Assistant Town Attorney. Um, is with the revisions that uh, the commission suggested. Uh, I know that the councils are already scheduled to take this up, I believe, next week. Um, does the commission have to review the changes before it moves forward? Or since this was a recommendation to forward a draft, can it move forward with our motion with to accept those specific changes?
It, it can move forward with the recommendation to forward the draft with these changes. And um, as noted in the staff report, the recommendation then would. Uh, be to subsequently submit the draft to HCD for HCD's review. And then there would be some additional discussion revisions and the actual adoption of the housing element would not take place until. Consideration with the EIR either later this year or in, you know, early twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Assistant Town Attorney. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, for uh getting us the clarification. Um, so uh, if there's nothing for routine and other matters, we can move on to reports. Uh, do any of the commissioners have anything to report? Seeing a lot of shaking heads. Uh, so to move on to, to staff, does staff have anything they'd like to report?
Yes, we have a town council meeting coming up on July eleventh and also on July thirteenth. After that, council will go dark and so will planning commission. And uh, the next council meeting after that will be August twenty-fourth.
All right.
So enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Um, hopefully the staff will get some enjoyment too, but it sounds like you got a lot of work to do between now and then. Um, so with that, we can move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, Vice Chair, second. I see Commissioner Bodie. Um, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Uh, we are adjourned at uh nine, ten PM. Uh, so I lost my bet to my wife. I thought this was going to go straight up till ten o'clock. So thank you all for uh, for uh working through this and thank you for all your diligent work and going through this document. And uh, helping us to get the best recommendation off that we can to the council. Thank you all and we'll see you on, I guess, at the end of August.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good summer.
Night.